Call a meeting order at 7:03. Roll call.
Ed Markus.
Sean Harrow.
Randy Snead.
Erica Burton.
Derek Bell.
Lisa Malley.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Minutes from February the first, 2023.
We approve the minutes from Wednesday, February first, 2023.
One second, Dave.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from February the first of 2023. Any further comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
I abstain.
They abstain. Citizens input. Stand, sir, and state your name and address.
Bob Byers, 412 East South Street. Good evening. I have two things real quick. The first thing, I have a question, and I know the town's currently in a contract with and everything, but I've been hearing more and more about large item pickup days with the municipality's respective trash service. Most towns are going to, well, Bourbon has monthly. I don't know how they do that, but they do. Other towns have where they have one day, like Plymouth, I think, is the first Monday, and it is one item per month on that date, which is their normal trash pickup day. I know we do, what, four a year, two in, you know, it's kind of spread out through the year. I don't know. Maybe the way we've got it is better because there's no limit, so to speak, but I don't know if that's worth looking into when contractual times or amendments to the current contract become available. Might be more beneficial, I don't know, maybe not. It does restrict it only one item a month, whereas our current one, to my knowledge anyway, is unlimited. I've never had them leave anything anyway.
Lisa, I'm good.
Our contract is up in 2025, so.
I just looked at that sheet the other night.
Or 2025.
Well, we pick up once quarterly?
I think that's what it is. Used to be two in the spring, two in the fall.
I think it's once quarterly now, isn't it?
Yeah, so when we redid the contract last, I think it was last year or the year before.
Right.
I think it was the year before. We, we had two in April and two in October, and people were mad about that because they were like, you know, you should spread it out more. So we decided, we renegotiated with Republic, and we got one in April, one in June, one in July, or, no, not June. No, May, no. One in June, one in August, and then one in October. And so we.
I like that better to go with, by the way.
Yeah, so everybody seemed happy with that. I've never heard anybody complain, and normally, if somebody has a large item, we will refer them to Republic, and we will say, you have to call them. If they choose to bill you for that large item, that's on them because it's not covered under our contract. But I do know that Republic has picked up maybe one item, you know?
Probably.
Yeah, you know, if they have the right truck in town, they'll pick up the one, they'll make an appointment and pick up the one item, and they have not billed a lot of people. Doesn't mean they're not gonna bill, you know, you can't call them all the time and say, hey, I've got one item this week, one item next, you know? But if you've not called before and you've got just an item, you've bought a new couch and you need to get rid of the old one, sometimes they'll make an exception for that.
Well, okay, maybe one per.
One of the comments I heard from a resident was, I wish we had more days in the warm months. I was just sitting here thinking to myself, I was gonna ask Bob what his thoughts were on it, and then it kind of goes through my head, you know? You could have one quarterly, and I think it's a good idea, have one every quarter. But what if we added a second one in the two quarters in the one month?
That'd be even better. Because that'd be only two more a year.
Exactly.
Okay, well, and when we renegotiate.
Right, right.
We'll probably do that, but not.
That seems to be, when residents talk to me about that, and that's just, you know, my small area of the world up there, is that it was wish we had a couple more days in the warmer months, because that's when they're working outside or they're, you know, doing something where they have a lot of them bigger items per se than they do in the cold months. And there are some stuff in the cold months. I just, I think that instead of adding a bunch of days, maybe we'd be better off to walk into this and maybe get a proposal on adding two.
When we're up for renewal in a couple of years, we can.
And I knew it was early. I knew we still had a few years, but I had the idea. And while we're on the topic, I think they've done a great job in recent months. I think they've done fantastic services.
I did not get my trash picked up today, so.
They missed a few today, I noticed.
Well, I guess for the record, when they.
But I am not complaining. I am not. I.
I guess I haven't.
I am not complaining.
I should say my little area hadn't had problems, but they like.
It's gotten a lot better.
So are you bragging?
No, I'm just saying that he said that he hasn't heard any, and I will tell you today.
I think one thing I noticed, a lot of the cans were getting blown over by the hybrid this morning.
Oh, yeah. My guy got out and picked it up.
The guy was having to stop and pick up the cans.
Yeah, you know, I noticed that today.
And, you know, they've got.
Well, they picked up all around me, but I, I, so, but what they have done is they are more communicative with us. Like today, they gave me an address, and they said there was a can blown over. He tried to get out of the truck, but two dogs came up and started attacking him, so he got back in his truck. That can did not get picked up today, and he, they gave me the address.
That's good.
But that's because there were dogs out there.
Communication is key. We want to get any.
They are, they are being more communicative.
They, they've gotten a hundred times better, and they are, from my business relationship with them, I can tell you, they are extremely more staff than they used to be.
Yeah.
But.
So they're doing good.
My other thing, and I don't mean any disrespect to anybody, but it was brought up last month, and I don't know the status of it. I would just like to speak my personal opinion as a citizen of this town. I have an issue with the idea of dissolving the park board into the council's role.
I will discuss that as well, but.
Yes.
That'll be brought up there.
Yes. My fear is just ruined, thank you. My fear is there's a group of people over there, they seem to do a pretty good job. Our park system is one of the best, and while the council ultimately, at least if I remember right, appoints every member to that board as they do several or all others, I don't think the council has the capacity to take care of everything. That's why those committees exist, and not that you guys aren't a good group of individuals, but the more, more people you have, the more ideas that come about, and the more things that flourish. I think that dissolving the park board as any other board within the town would be a detriment to that specific entity or any other entity of a board you wish to dissolve. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here?
This doesn't happen very often, but I agree with you, Bob.
Well, there's Uber's.
I do. I don't know if this is a good time or not.
Put your name and address.
Steve Guriel. 11865 Olive Trail, beautiful Plymouth.
Okay.
So I'm here tonight to see if there's any talk about the rental inspections. I'll be honest with you, I have rentals in Plymouth, La Paz, everywhere. So I don't have any here in Argus, but I want to see where your guys are going with this, because if you adopt something, more likely Plymouth is going to adopt it. And next thing, it's going to be Culver, then it's going to be La Paz, it's going to be Brean. So we want to see where you're going with this.
If you don't mind, David, would you mind taking that?
At this time, we are not looking at any rental inspections or registration or anything else. Will we look at something in the future? Perhaps. Right now, there's nothing in the near future that's coming up. It would be advertised for a public hearing before we do that, so you'll be able to read that in the paper or get noticed that way. But right now, we don't have anything in the works for rental inspections.
Talking just residential, so. Two entities there.
Residential.
Residential.
Or commercial.
And what was your last name again?
Guriel.
Help me out with that, yeah.
G-U-R-I-E-L.
Thank you.
I got it close the first time.
So we're into a little looking into this because I was aware that somebody had called in, and maybe you're the person that called into that.
I called Guriel today.
Okay. We had talked about this, I'm gonna say, two meetings ago, and was provided, I was provided a little bit of documentation about what other towns and municipalities are doing around the state, and I hadn't really looked into that, and I still haven't really dug deep into this, but I dug 15, 20 minutes, and I found some interesting things, and you might want to take note of this, but there is actually a set of statutes, it's found at 36120, and it talks about its residential leases to municipalities and a method or a way to inspect them. That is separate and distinct from what we call the unsafe building laws, and I already knew that those existed and that we could, if we had a building that had a nasty roof or something like that, that, and if a homeowner said, nope, you're not coming in, that there was a way for the town to be able to do that through a court process, this also provides a mechanism to do that. I've not dived into this to see exactly how this works, but I do see that there are some other towns that do that. I think right now the town has operated in the past largely on a, I'll say, a consensual basis, where if there's an issue, the town would send out a letter, and I think those letters are ongoing, but I think it's, the majority of property owners in the town provide consent. So if there's ever consent, and there's no issue about having an ordinance or any procedure or anything like that, you can always come in and do an inspection on a basis like that. So that's where that's happened now. I think right now the town operates purely on an issue of, we send out letters, homeowners, or I should say homeowners, property owners give consent, but there are mechanisms for the town to be able to do that if the town wants to do that.
On a one-by-one basis, not just a blanket ordinance?
No, no, it would be a blanket ordinance, okay? As I understand it, it would be a blanket ordinance that would basically cover all of the rental, and these are residential rental properties under that code site that I gave to you.
Was that for inspection or for registration?
Well, I think maybe both, and again, I have not dived into it, but I do know that there was an inspection process that I referred, or I saw when I referred to those statutes.
Plymouth tried that on the landlords in Plymouth, and Sean Cherise looked it up and said there's, and I don't know what the date was, but if the city did not have that ordinance in place already, the city could not start a new registration process.
I do remember seeing a date in there, like 1984 or something like that.
Eighty-five, correct. If the city didn't have that ordinance in place by that, you could not just start up a registration fee.
Well, to make it mandatory, or the inspections mandatory. But again, I haven't dived into it yet, but again, that code type's 36120, if you want to take a look at that.
Sir, state your name, please, and your address.
Al is an R14680 Lincoln Highway in Plymouth. I'm here with Steve also. We're members, we're actually president and vice president of the Landlord Association. So we're just looking at what's happening, trying to make sure that, it's very frustrating when it's like, there's meetings and then stuff happens, and you just go, oh crap, that's what we gotta do now. So we're trying to be proactive, be here. I know South Bend passed some regulations a while back, and what happened was a lot of landlords were like, screw this, we're out, and they just sold their properties and they were done. So you gotta be careful about what, how restrictive you get with whatever it is you pass, because that could happen, and it's already, property values are going up, assessments are going up, taxes are going up, everything's going up. Right now, if you're a renter and you go to move in someplace, NIPSCO says, hey, you need a deposit. Water Department, hey, you need a deposit. So a lot of these people, they gotta have first month, deposit, and then all the deposits, so it's a lot of money to move into a rental. So if you guys pass something at another cost, we're gonna pass it on because we're not taking the hit. So if you want affordable housing, I would say try and keep, keep it affordable. If there's really a problem where landlords are being slum lords, that's a different issue. But I think, I think most of the people I associate with, Steve included, we're trying to keep our properties up. You know, there's only a certain level you can get, and I don't know if you've ever been in the landlord business, but some people will come in and literally trash whatever it is you've got, and then we end up with thousands of dollars. If we're lucky, it's a thousand or two thousand. If we're not lucky, it's five or $10,000 when they move out. So we're trying to, you know, collect our rents, do everything we're supposed to do, also keep it affordable housing, but more regulations we have to buy by, the harder it is to keep those affordable.
I think that, and I'm not necessarily speaking for everybody in the board, because we've had this a little bit of a conversation, but I think what we're trying to address is we're not trying to run landlords out, we're not trying to tell them how to run their business. We want affordable rental housing, but we want safe and, and something that, you know, people can live in that they don't have to worry about the conditions inside the home, you know, the fire, the smoke and fire detectors, you know, the carbon monoxide detectors. The last thing we need is a house where it's unsafe, and we as a council fail to act, and we know that there's, you know, an unsafe home, and there's four children, and they die in a house fire because.
Right.
We didn't do anything. So I mean, I think our whole, on behalf of the council, I think our whole intention here is to address those unsafe conditions, not tell you how to run your house.
Right, I feel like that's a whole different thing, because it's almost like I was a contractor or still am, and OSHA says, hey, you gotta follow these guidelines. Well, that's great when you're in a steel mill, but when you're on residential house, no, blanket across the board, everybody has to stand by these rules and regulations. So if you're looking for a few small houses that are not good, slum lords, okay, do something then, but don't blanket every, every one.
And the issue would be, how would you single out those three or four, just using that number, three or four homes, okay, we're gonna pass an ordinance that covers your.
Well, how are you gonna find out about those homes, though?
I'm sorry.
How are you gonna find out about those homes? Someone's gonna complain, so you go, you target those people who complain.
I think part of it is through the inspections as well.
I think, yeah, I think it's driven by the inspection process, and I think really all the town.
I'm opposing that, I'm just telling you, whatever you pass, it has repercussions for landlords, and then those repercussions will go on to the renters.
But I'm just saying, I think it's just an expectation of compliance with current zoning codes and ordinances, it's not asking for anything over and above that.
One of, one of the biggest complaints I hear, and Ed's spot on, in my opinion, at least how I feel, what he, I just add too, one of the biggest complaints I hear, and I could probably speak for most of us up here, are rental units, and every, every community needs them, okay? Nobody's disputing that. You have rental units sitting at two, the people that own their properties and take care of the property, and these people in these rental units are not keeping up their, just mowing the lawn, they, they just get trash sitting around their house, just, just general aesthetics makes a person that's got a nice place next to them.
Right, I agree.
You know, and these landlords, and I'm not singling anybody out, I'm saying landlords, they're doing, they do nothing to make the tenants comply with our ordinance and our planning book and that kind of stuff. I, that's where it's all, I don't think anybody is up here looking to, you know, charge fees for anything, we just want to have a way to, you know, and those residents that are renters, they are members of our community at that point, you know? We want everybody to be safe, you know, and that's, I think, where we're coming from.
Well, I don't really know of other investors that go, I'm not going to Argus because they're not, they're not an easy town to deal with. So if you want more of that, then, and I'm not trying to pick on anybody, I'm just telling you, I've heard that before, so.
One thing that I think is important, and not to interrupt you, but I think it's important is, when you're talking about passing this along to the tenant, and you know, you're, you know, they've got the NIPSCO on, we're not talking, from my understanding, we're not talking thousands and thousands of dollars of, of inspection fees. I mean, we're, I think we're talking a very minimal inspection fee and a registration fee. We're not talking, you know, even $500. I mean, we're talking something very minimal just to establish this and.
I understand the fees are minimal, but if the kickback is, hey, that outlet doesn't work, or whatever, and then we gotta come in and fix them in so many days, that's, that's beyond, anyway.
I don't know. We're not doing.
I'm telling you what I know from South Bend, it was a big deal from South Bend.
Why is a homeowner, wouldn't you want to make sure that everything is safe in the house? What, you, you mean, you're vested in that home, why would you want it to catch fire in the electric?
I'm not saying I would.
I'm just throwing the question out there.
I'm just saying, when we, when we rent our houses, we try to do everything we do, can to do, but we're not in them, so we don't know unless the customer or the renter calls and says, hey, the outlet in the bedroom, we don't know. So I mean, that'd be great if you could help us follow up on those things.
It's a very good point. I think this is twofold, that's part of the, you know, is not only.
So I'm not trying, I'm really not trying.
Also, we can report, you would know, hey, there is something wrong.
I'm just telling you, from my standpoint, we're trying to make sure that it doesn't start here, go to Plymouth, go to Argus, go to La Paz.
We're not, we're not at all trying to, to run anybody out of town, we're not at all trying to make it that nobody has a place to live. That's not the case at all. We're just, our biggest concern was safety and the conditions inside the homes, making sure there's safer people.
I would say, look for, look for, not a blanket, we're all, because I don't feel like, as a landlord, that we all are that person.
Well, but there still should be some, some basis. I mean, there should be a minimum at that point that establishes that, and if your home.
Or maybe just trying to make government bigger, I don't know.
So, so to fix, I think there was two issues, you probably read the paper where you saw that.
Yeah.
So the actual issue that night that we are tackling, we have some downtown buildings that are in zoning violations. So we're actually requesting to do inspections, we have some fire code issues. Those were the commercial buildings we were actually going and looking at. What you just talked about tonight is something, I don't even know if most of them have heard anything about or know anything about a residential inspection.
Okay, well, that's why we're here, we're trying to be proactive.
We hadn't pushed it that long.
We don't want that, and I'm not trying to be negative, I'm trying to share, this is from my side, if I don't share it, you guys don't know.
So I'm sure this goes further, there'll be more meetings, don't you worry.
If, if that does ever happen, if you would contact Steve and myself, we would love that, we'd love to try to make something that's favorable to everybody.
As a matter of fact, when we discussed this, one of my concerns and one of my things was that all of the renters or that, all of the landlords were made aware of what we were discussing and let them have the opportunity to speak at any meetings we had regarding this.
One of the things I'll just share with you, as, as a landlord, renters are very good at taking their problems and turning them into our problems, and they, they're not always truthful, so. So if you get phone calls, sometimes what really happened was something totally different. But anyway, we try.
But we, we can turn that around and say, what you're hearing about Argus being not, you know, not fun to work with or not easy to work with, those are people that probably turn their problems into ours, and are turning around and saying that, you know.
I'm not trying to, I'm just telling you what I hear.
And that's, that's what I'm saying, it's hearsay, you know what I mean? And, you know.
I'm sorry, the only thing I hear about Argus is how utilities.
Well, we actually have the lowest electric rates in, around, if you go by the $1.
Water, this coming in.
You want to know why?
So.
Because everybody here gets one bill.
One bill.
One bill.
Your tenants' tenants get a water bill, then they get a separate electric bill. So they can be just as much as they are here, but they're two separate bills, and they don't put them that they're together.
So, yeah, it's perception.
All our restaurants get one bill.
But, yeah.
Electric, water, sewer, trash, it's all them.
Only thing it doesn't cover is NIPSCO gas and internet if you choose to have it. And it's.
But the land guy, like I said, we haven't, that was an idea, nothing went through, you don't think, by all means, if this goes any further.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, just to finish with citizens' input, we'd like to move on to old business. At this time, attorney report.
Just a couple things to let you folks know about. On one, we've got some, there's just a couple minor zoning amendments that are gonna be coming down to shoot. It starts with the plan commission, that's kind of gonna be up on their agenda, the meeting of March the 7th, I believe, and these are a few minor tweaks, and then you're gonna hear about those on the 15th of March, so long as they pass and you get a favorable recommendation from the plan commission. The other thing is that we do have, this evening, we have the opening of the mowing bids and the mowing specs, and as far as I know, we have one bid.
One bid, and it has not been opened before.
I just opened it three minutes ago, but it was a bid that was received January 26 of 23 at 12:47 PM from Albert Hanselman of A&amp;J Lawn Care LLC, DBA Premier Turf Solutions. Not aware of any other bids?
None.
Okay. And also, just for the record, and so that's in the minutes, we did publish notice of these bid specs being published in the paper. They were published, we have the affidavit publishing back on January 20th and 28th, and tonight is the night for bid openings. Tonight's the night, guys, we open the bids, the next meeting, we would basically make a determination about those, so they have some time to take a look at this and do what you want to do about checking references or whatever you want. But again, this bid is for the 2023 mowing season in the amount of 2,000, or I'm sorry, $22,000 from Premier Turf Solutions.
Twenty-two even?
Twenty-two thousand even.
That's a month, what month, the what month?
April to November.
This runs from April 15 to November 1.
Thank you.
It also looks like a certificate of liability insurance. Looks like, most likely a letter of reference or recommendation, maybe, I think two of those that are attached to the bid.
Are you still one of the reference?
Yes.
And that is you, sir.
Correct, and I voted last year for you.
Right.
And you did a great job.
I'd like to make a motion to table.
We need to, just because we can't make a determination concerning to what we published until the next meeting, but we got one bid, and you guys can obviously take a look at that.
Table until the next meeting.
I'll second.
So we just hold it to the next meeting? Is that it?
Yeah, we have to.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to hold the bid to the next meeting. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye's gonna do, we're not gonna make.
That's a landed report.
Motion to accept the attorney report.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to accept attorney report. Any further comments on that? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Other old business, I want to say something. This is old business about, after I had some problems and some things I looked over and after that, I really wanted to apologize to the park board and to the town council about talking about dissolving the park board. There were some things that I didn't quite understand, they got straightened out, so I'm, I realized I made a quite a mistake with that. So again, as far as I'm concerned, just dissolving of the park board is closed and doesn't need to be brought up again.
Takes a strong individual and a good man to apologize in a public setting such as this, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm glad your issues were resolved.
So that's, that's the end of that.
I guess under other old business, Randy, Corey Bowman had handed me that order, if you want to bring that up regarding the Kenzie property.
Okay, this, this is, do I need to read the whole thing or just kind of, well, this is the Kenzie property over here, right?
Across the street.
This, this is an order coming from, it doesn't say who it is.
Carmen Post, the attorney?
Yeah, it's coming from Carmen Post, she's.
Okay, Carmen Post, the lawyer, yes.
Basically helping out the town to that a conflict on that thing. Looks like she is moving that thing forward.
So the order states what we're trying to do, it's got the address, and everything's correct in there, and it says that the, that the Town of Argus Council orders that the above described premises remove the following public nuisance, two Chevy trucks, a boat and a trailer, a camper, and other junk scattered around and located on the premises.
Is that the one where the garage, like, exploded?
And she's given them sixty days from the day that this order. So we have to sign it and clear it. Now, Mark and I talked about this today.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, the fence.
They're starting to put a fence up.
Yeah, they're, they're also starting to put a fence up. I don't know what we'll do to live with the fence.
Can we cite that since we're already doing this or should we just let the attorney out?
You're gonna have to let her know about that.
Okay.
Do they, do they pull a permit on it?
Yeah, they pull a permit?
We don't have that in place yet.
Yeah.
That's, that's the zoning amendment that I just.
Let me get a fence put in.
So it says the order becomes final ten days after the notice has been given to the individual. So then, then they have sixty days to clean it up. So we will sign this, date this tonight.
We have a motion to approve the order as written.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the order as written. Any further comment? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll take care of that.
Thank you, Randy.
You're welcome. Uh, park board opening?
Um, as of then. I thank you for waiting on this. Um, I, we had met, I had met with the park board president, Mark Dean, and um, we had actually scheduled an executive session to discuss this, then Mark twisted his book um and ended up having to be off for a while. But um, the, the whole discussion was, we had five applicants, I believe, or five letters of intent that were submitted. We, um, as a park board, they had discussed, they were all provided with those letters, and it was unanimous that the park board members, um, and I am in agreement with them, that they had recommended that the town council, as you all know, we make the appointment, uh, had recommended that the council, um, move forward with the appointment of Damon Binkley to that open position. Damon did prepare a very nice letter of intent. Um, he's getting married this year, um, teaching at the school. I think he'd be a very good added member to the park board and will bring a lot to them. Not that the others that had expressed intent would not, but I believe, at this point in time, I think Damon would be the best fit.
Just to add to Ed's, talk about Damon here. Uh, Damon is a college graduate from, and he specialized in, I used to call him a turbo counter, but it's, it's bio, it's a biology.
Marine biology?
Wild, what, wildy?
Uh, trying to think exactly what his degree is in, but, but it has to do with aquatics and things like this. And so with the park having that beautiful pond there and everything, Damon would be a great guy for this, cause he's got a lot of knowledge and, and he understands the uh, the effects of the park and also the wetlands back there in the back, which you know, we have for our wild animals, I guess, that are.
At the time when the um, uh, wild flowers and things were planted and the, the things were done in Folk Park, Damon worked for the firm that actually did that.
Right.
Installed all that. He's got a very good knowledge of the parks and system. He's involved with soccer at the school, and I think, um, I, I think it'll be, I, I don't think, I, I'm very confident that it will be a great addition.
It is an appointment of the council, and so long as, there's not more than two members of the same political party, so long as he lives within four miles of the corporate boundaries of the town, then he's good to go.
You know, he lives over here on Indian Avenue, so.
What's his political?
Never asked.
Well, I can't, I think I know what it is, but I, I can't, I'm not asking, yeah.
I have one question, does I mean?
Go ahead.
Does Mr. Binkley have any other um, town intra, I mean, is, is he on any other boards or he's not an employee or you have any conflict of interest in, or be in conflict in that position with vendors? Okay.
He's a science teacher at the school, so.
Is there, is there any, and I think that one point, because um, I mean, I'm leaving, I'm a Republican, I mean, he's taking my spot. Um, even if he were to be a Republican, I think, I mean, I don't, there was at one point, I think, if the, you had to do the qualifications of the applicants or whatever, I think there, or not qualifications, but um, I, I don't remember how this statute read.
Here's the deal, is that basically, there was a point in time when we did, there's a process for a waiver of that by resolution, okay? But short of that, I mean, we didn't make sure that we fit into that category. He fits into that category, not more than two members of the same political party.
Well, I will tell you right now, I believe only one of your park board members has ever been a Democrat.
But again, there is that waiver process, if this is an issue, but it's something that we need to tackle before he's appointed.
So let me do the waiver first.
Yeah, definitely.
You can take that back to the park board then, since you're the liaison for the park board.
Well, and the, the, but the council would have to do the waiver, correct?
I know.
Right, that's what we're gonna do.
I think it is, uh.
Yeah.
And we did this, I'm gonna say, four, five, six years ago for one individual.
I would move that we table it until, and then prepare a waiver based upon that, till the next meeting.
I'll second, nobody else's.
So we, we do have a, a motion and a second to the waivers or to uh table the appointment of Damon Binkley to the park board, uh, putting on a waiver to be taken care of, and then we'll bring it up in the next meeting. Any further comments? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We also have an opening on redevelopment. Uh, if anyone's interested, we get a letter into the town clerk, and uh, there is an opening on redevelopment. Ordinance twenty twenty-three oh one salary ordinance. Just over a month. This is the one that we.
So I changed the heading, if you look, it's changed. I think Derek will be happy with that one. Um, so it says the First Amendment, but it's changing the original ordinance.
I didn't like that, no, I didn't see that.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't pay attention.
I took your advice.
That's good.
So basically, this ordinance is again back to the emergency medical technician or E M T, non-exempt, part-time. We've changed the uh salary for them from a, from fourteen to twenty-two dollars per hour. And uh. And it effective February the first, twenty twenty-three.
And make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three dash oh two salary ordinance, amending ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fourteen, First Amendment.
It's twenty twenty-three oh one. Just to.
Well, it says twenty twenty-three oh two.
I know. It's twenty twenty-three oh one, Derek just pointed.
We know that.
So even though she.
Just reading what was presented to me, so my motion is twenty twenty-three oh one.
Yeah. And that's to waive the rules so you can pass it?
No, I just made a motion to.
On the first read.
On the first read.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to waive the rules and pass on all three readings?
No.
You know, to, just to waive the rules?
No, just to pass it on first reading.
Oh, just pass it on the first read, all right. Any further comment? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. I'm just gonna redo it and just pass it all, all right?
Four to one.
Fine.
Three to one.
Three to one.
Three to one, I'm starting.
All right, I found out what you did to your C P A.
I'm okay with it.
I want to be the, I want to be right.
So we'll bring it back to the next meeting?
So what you wanna do?
I got a pretty good idea to make on the test. I just want to be the right one when it gets here.
Oh, man.
So I guess we're gonna.
It's already passed, yeah.
Yeah, we just go, we'll bring it back to the next meeting.
We're gonna have to bring it back in the next meeting.
Yeah, we passed it once, then the next meeting.
Your orders are either two at the next meeting.
Cause it's still, it's retroactive, it's still back in February, whatever day it was.
Okay, meeting, ordinance twenty twenty-three oh two solar rate amendments?
Yeah, I can pick this up a little bit. This is something that um, came from Solville. Uh, I think Jamie was working with them. It's to do with basically primarily the school and their solar issue or their project, I should say. Um, there was a very small tweak. It's found on page two. Uh, there's a, and I don't even understand the numbers, but it's basically amounted to a tweak from a one point eight five to a two point one five. And that's the reason for the rate change. As I understand it, it will potentially save the school a significant amount of money.
Yeah, it had to do with this, we, they had a project over there. We changed the size of the transformer that they needed, so we actually downsized it. So when we did that, that rate had to be adjusted. So that, that's the reason for it. So here you are.
Nate has the right number on it.
I'd like to make a motion to pass unanimous, to pass unanimous consent for ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh two, to pass on all three readings tonight.
No, we've gotta make a move.
That's what I just did. I passed three, man, that's consent.
You mean to suspend the rules?
Oh, yeah, I gotta suspend the rules. Or, so like I said, Congress. Make a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero two, unanimous consent.
Is he good, Neil?
He's good.
He's good.
I'll second it.
Wow.
So. I wasn't gonna second, I don't like the unanimous consent.
We have a motion and a second. To suspend the rules and pass on all three readings, ordinance number twenty twenty-three oh two, the solar rate amendment. Any further comments? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Array.
Unanimous.
Now you have to make a motion. You can make a second motion and pass it.
He did it on all three readings.
You gotta suspend the rules first and then pass it on all three readings.
All right, we gotta start all over again.
No, he already suspended the rules.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero two, on all three readings.
A second, Doug?
We have a motion and a second to pass the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh two, on all three readings. Any further comments? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
New business, any new business? No. All right, department head reports, please.
So, and back to the, the Kinsey order, and I don't know if, if we need to do this or not, but when my communication with the attorney, she said she was gonna send another one to Lisa with the um, the actual owner, which would be Kinsey's mother, I think, her grandmother, mother. And she didn't get one, right?
Not yet, but I didn't check my email. I think it came in late this afternoon.
Well, that came a few days ago.
Oh.
So, but I don't know, do we need, I guess, I'm asking, do we need another one for, or is it just good for the, does that make sense?
Well, that would be a question for Carmen.
Well, if I, if I remember, when I first did it, I did it for the owner, and you said you had a, you, you see where I don't wanna.
I see, I'm, I'm not sure.
So then I went to the kid that lived there, then we went to Carmen. I just don't wanna go over again.
Is this addressed to the residents or the property owners?
This is addressed to the, the, the resident.
I think, I mean, from what I've seen of this, her intent may well be then to file suit against the residents for violation of various zoning ordinance procedures.
So it's, it's fine the way it is then?
Nope.
Is it possible that she's going to then send the owner of the property a copy of the order as well?
It could be.
And that was her intent to send that to Lisa as a copy of the order?
I know.
I mean, I'm assuming her.
We probably have to talk to attorney.
Well, she said she, I don't think so, because she, in my communication, I understood she was gonna have it, I would deliver this one, since it was in Argus, and since the other was out of town, um, she was gonna find an alternate way to deliver it via the sheriff's department, I guess. So I assumed it was a second order.
I, I just have not received one, but I think we'd have to call the attorney and find out what her intentions are.
And, and other than that, the only thing I know, I tried to mention it in the last meeting, that our new hire, Richard Springer, completed the, her stuff, we're just waiting for him to get the okay.
We're still waiting.
Yeah, we'll be probably waiting for another couple of weeks, probably.
Really?
Unless you can call out there and harass them, you know?
I'll harass them.
That's all I have.
Well, he's, he's not doing anything yet.
Well, yes, I mean, no, not for us. I, I don't think he's unemployed, if that's what.
No, I, that's not what I meant. I, I meant for the town.
No, he's not doing anything for us yet, till he's hired. Do we get to go with him?
Let me know when you get that uh.
I'll have to bring it to someone on the police, uh, two people on the police commission. And we'll have to send it back, if I remember right, they don't have to.
Let me know when you get that, so I can, you can get that all processed, and then I can let the council know too.
That's all I have.
I'm your reporter. Is there, is there anybody that's reporting the mileage on the Dodge truck? Cause it's been the same.
No, that'd be the S R O, you talking about the S R O truck?
No.
No, they hasn't been doing that.
So it's just been the same one?
Yeah. I mean, I can have it start coming in, but you're looking at a few miles every month. He's not driving anywhere, but.
It's parked out there, right?
Out here in front?
No, I mean, out by the P D.
When he's done, he parks it at the P D, yes.
Somebody could look at it.
I can look at it if you want.
I was just curious what the mileage, just keep it.
Well, it'd be good to have accurate mileage on the.
I can, I can do that.
Yeah, that would be good. I, I agree on that.
Yeah.
Talking about the vehicles, Corey.
Yes.
I was in trouble with the chargers that they had.
Yeah, the lug nuts?
Took the front tire, you're aware of that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I did tell uh Joseph to check all of the vehicles tonight, okay, Jamie too.
I guess it had like, didn't even have a right lug nuts on it or something like that?
I just had regular nuts.
Yeah.
Yeah, just had regular grade five, had, had a grade five bolt, a grade five nut, and a regular.
I would, it was, it couldn't, I would assume it was from here and now, but.
So anyhow, just so you know, if, if, if he's, I don't know how he's gonna do it, it's up to him.
I don't really care.
Jamie's, schedules his time, but he's to check all the vehicles.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Check the tires and stuff on them, make sure everything's correct.
Yeah, that's, I can't believe that a shopman even, I never recognized it. I just blew my mind.
That doesn't surprise me, I suppose, anything. But I mean, I've seen dealers do stuff too.
Yeah.
So, and I can't prove, I don't know if I can, I guess I could prove, I just don't know that's true.
It's water under the bridge.
Right.
It's fixed, and now, you know, we're just gonna, since they had uh, the other vehicles in there at one time or another.
But I both charged it, I just did an oil change on the other one today.
Yeah, we should be all caught up with your vehicles right now.
Is everything in the building, is everything, okay, still?
Oh, great, really great. I think Joseph's gonna come and install soap dispensers or something like that.
Yeah, we'll wait for him to come in.
Ever gonna put anything on the front end to tell everybody what that building is?
They're supposed to be ordered.
Three weeks.
Are we still?
I just, I just talked to him, it'll be about three weeks.
Did you know what they were for? That might have been just before you came on, uh, or just letter, it'll say Argus Police Department.
We are gonna, where are we putting the wooden sign up front of those?
No.
No?
I think so.
I thought we were.
I mean, we pulled it out, we put it out back. If we wanna put that up, we can, but we'll have the letters on the whole front of the building when it's done, so.
What number of letters is this?
I don't care.
It doesn't matter to me.
If we're not gonna use it, I'll probably scrap it then.
We can wait till we see what the letters look like when they're on. I mean, we can go with that, that route too.
The only thing with the sign, if somebody is driving, it does tell the police department right there.
What's the sign, you mean?
Well, I mean, unless they're going, they may not see it till they get by it, yeah, but unless you're.
Like it says, five hundred feet off the road.
The milking parlor sticks out so far, you can't see it till you get right. The milking parlor sticks out so far, you can't see it till you get right up.
We had cat stuff delivered to the building today. Through the library, 119 West, well, which is our address, so. I don't, I have no idea.
Well, yeah, that, yeah. He didn't have change by now.
Yeah, well. Just cat food and cat treats.
So is that the end of your report?
Nah, that's all I have.
Okay. Utilities?
I, I have a few things too, um. They've been doing pretty good on the buildings over here, just got a, just a couple minor things to finish up on, the police and electric storage. And then they, they got the roof on over here. He, he thinks that's gonna go pretty quick, getting that wrapped up, um, on the second building, so. Um, the other thing we fixed, on the backside, there was a pillar there, that holding up the awning on the, on the backside of the EMS building. They, they tried to fix that, but they couldn't find the block, so they ended up just tearing the whole thing off and building it all brand new, so. It looks good, I drove by it. Now, they just, they're gonna put a cap over it, so water doesn't get in there and blow that out again, like it did before. Couple other, I have several quotes for you guys tonight. One was the EMS garage doors that you asked about, Ed. Uh, there's two quotes in there. One from Superior and one from DC. I sent that to all of you, I don't know if you wanna do anything with that tonight, or.
I, I would move that we go ahead and proceed with Superior Garage Door Quote, it's the cheapest of the quotes, $10,350, I believe.
Yeah.
For the doors. And the doors are, from, from everything I looked at it, I mean, the doors are identical to the doors that are on there now, and to what was quoted by the other.
And I, and I called them, and actually, they sent me the doors, and they do look identical to what's there, so.
Is the.
The.
I assume that the window kit?
The windows are included in the Superior.
They're insulated, the, they're insulated windows, though, they're.
Yeah, and there're four, there's four windows in that door.
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second to accept the bid for the two new EMS doors from Superior Door. $10,350. Any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? If that was done, Kate, do you need?
The second one is that parking lot quote that I discussed a couple meetings ago, uh, for the police building over there, where we're gonna move the alley. We kinda shaved that down a little bit, just to make the parking area concrete, and then we'll, we'll come back and asphalt it or something later, where the, where the alley will move to, so. Well, that quote was 15,840. And there's, there's quite a bit of work being done. I, I think I sent you drawings of how that's gonna look. Okay.
My question, is on the front there where it says replace, is that on the sidewalk that they're going to replace areas, or what is that?
There's, there's several spots on 10 that are cracked.
Okay.
So the, those panels will be replaced after that.
And that's included in that?
That's all included, and then there's gonna be a front walk to the police building too.
Okay.
Now, does that have to meet the ADA?
Yes. So we've got, we're gonna cut the curb out and get it, get the grade right and everything.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's all in this?
It's all, all that's in there.
I move to approve the B and B quote, 15,840.
We'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to accept B and B's report for replacing the concrete in front of the new police building, amount of $15,840. Any further comments? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Then the last quote I have tonight is for the water truck, for the utility bed on that. Um, I showed you three quotes tonight before the meeting. And I recommend we go with the, um, Terry's Truck Equipment on that quote. I think that's probably the most reasonable one for us. And that's an aluminum body on that. That, that bed in the WA Jones, they're the identical bed.
That's identical, that's identical to the 22,000.
Yeah, yeah. Then the other one's a fiber.
This is a box, right?
Yep.
A closed box?
Yep. It'll, it'll have doors on the sides, it's a utility bed, body.
She's gonna be there, good?
Yeah.
So is the one from Terry, is that, you say it's aluminum, or is that fiberglass?
No, it's aluminum.
Well, this is gonna head.
Alright, yeah, I'm good, that's fine.
Yeah, it is aluminum, that's what I was just looking at.
The other one is that one, this is UTB?
Yeah, that's why I said that was.
17,800.
Plus 850.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah.
Yeah, on this quote, you gotta add 850 on here.
So that's for the spray-on bed liner, and that'll do the, the top rails and the whole, the whole box inside.
So we're 17,800 plus the 850?
No, that's with, that's included.
That, that 850's in the 17,800, okay.
Yeah, yep.
Can't go wrong with that.
No. I'll make a motion to approve the bid for the water truck, uh, bed, water truck equipment for $17,800.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bid for Terry from, for the water truck, um, utility bed from Terry Truck Equipment Incorporated, for the $17,800. Any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, the other thing I have is, and I know I've talked to mostly of you about this, if not all, the, the lift station out at the Folker Park that we're having problems with. We pulled some kind of material out, we think it's some kind of concrete or, or something, but where it came from, we don't know. So that was why we had to replace that whole line. Uh, we were running that eight to 12 hours a day, is what that was pumping. Since we've replaced that line, that runs about, I think it's an hour, hour, hour and a half a week now.
Wow.
So that, that's how much restriction there was on that.
How long were these?
I, I don't know. And I know, as I've talked about it quite a bit, and that was 500 feet, and there's about an inch and a half in there, so I mean, it would have to be several five gallon buckets dumped down into there. So I, I just, I don't know. It, it had to happen in the last two years because there's new piping there from the lift station when we moved it, it was in that piping. So.
And for the record, it was not from my pool.
It's gotta be your fault somehow, it's.
But we're gonna send out letters to everybody in that neighborhood about, you know, putting things down the line or, or whatever, but, um.
Wait, the, the whole town, and, and.
No, no, this is, there's about seven houses on this line, so it's one of those that had to come from.
Back, stop one clear in the back.
Right, right.
No, it's the one that actually moved down the back of Bruce Stoffler.
Right behind Stoffler's house, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't.
Blows my mind.
It's fixed, it's working great now, so. And that, that's about it. We did get all the lights, Ed, changed the exit signs through all the buildings, so.
Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Economic Director?
I don't have much more.
You do, you've had all kinds of red writing.
Oh, I always have a lot of stuff, but not.
So who, who died on that 20 acres? So you said we was looking at that 20 acres, but the parent died, and now it's.
Oh, the property behind. We own the 20 acres, it's that behind you.
So that 14 acres then?
That, well, it's a 64 acre parcel.
Okay.
So, I'm still actually, we're still working on that with me. He had talked with him originally, so.
Well, I, I was.
Took me for a.
Well, I thought, I thought I'd say.
So, that's that. I mean, we've got stuff, what do we got coming up? We're waiting on the paving bids, that's kinda holding up another project we're working on.
I should have those at the end of the month, the end of February, we're hoping to split those onto bid. So then once that happens.
Hopefully, well, any time now, we'll, I'm waiting on that call from Shannon, hopefully we'll have good news there, so that we get approved.
My guy that was.
Here with her.
Mark, if you remember that gentleman that was here with her, I can't remember his name, but he, he took my telephone, and he said he would call, he would call me.
Oh, he might, I figured she would know before any of us. But, so, that was supposed to be in February, so hopefully, that's a good report, and, but.
Is that it?
That's enough for tonight.
Plan Director?
Inspections.
Yes.
Sent a letter out today to the downtown businesses. The week of March, the weeks of March 13th through the 24th, we're going to, just take a look inside, make sure that, uh, no ordinances are being violated. Not there to inspect, what they've done, what they've got, or anything else. We're looking for people living in basements on the first floor, which we have ordinance against both of those. That's one of the big things we're gonna look at. The fire chief is going with me.
I, I'll go with you too.
Right.
So you said that's the 23rd and 24th?
No, the 13th through the 24th, there's two weeks there.
Okay.
That we told them that we would be looking, and if they had any specific days, or they needed an appointment, we would be glad to do that. So. That's the big thing we have coming up.
Okay.
And that's just to ensure safety of any residents.
Right. So that's the end of the, um, Department Heads?
Make a motion to approve Department Head Reports.
We have a motion and a second to approve Department Head Reports. Any further comments? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Claims. Claims.
Okay, before we get into the claims, I just have a couple of questions, um, or statements, actually, not to, and I'm not overstating, but the $10,350 that you just approved, that's going to be almost half of your EMS budget, just to let you know. We have the money, I'm not saying we don't, I'm just putting a bug in your ear. And the $15,840, are we taking that from Community Development, or, because we've only put so much aside for that also. So we have the money, I'm not saying we don't have money. I just want the council to be aware of where the money is being spent from.
How much you got to PD fund?
You wanna tell me which one, the law enforcement fund?
I don't know that you can use it for that, for parking lots and stuff. I think.
You got restricted on that?
Yeah.
Well, I was thinking, do you wanna cost share, maybe, do you want that?
Yeah.
Some other, yeah, and that limits it.
Maybe, maybe.
So the doors is coming down at what?
The EMS building fund.
Okay.
And that, I mean, I think we budgeted like 25,000, so I wanna let you know that this is a huge chunk, you know.
And we still have the side doors coming out of that too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They were.
Three, three, four?
I think you said something like.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, you, you know, you only budgeted 25 for the whole year, and we're spending it all in the first quarter, or a lot of it, so. Just, I'm just making you aware. You guys said you wanted to be more aware of where things were coming from, so. And, uh, you know, with the Community Development Fund, I think you only budgeted 50, I believe it was 50. So, I'm not, you know, do you want it to come out of the general? Is it, you want it, we could take it out of the CCD, but of course, we drain that fund pretty quickly, so.
How about as the clerk, you recommend where we do this?
Well, I, I'm, I'm not saying that you don't have money, and I'm not saying.
I really like you.
You're asking your opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I would probably take it from Community Development, and then if you need more money, we can always do an additional appropriation at a later time. But I just wanted your, you guys said you wanted to be more involved in where the money was going, so.
Then this is your, that's your area of expertise, and I would.
I mean, it is.
I respect your opinion.
To me, it is Community Development, you are developing the community.
We, uh, we didn't overly. We didn't get very aggressive with the general fund anyway, to where we could do it, you know, part from the Community Development, part out of the general, you know, probably better to take it all out of that other one right now, right?
Well, this is out of the general fund, it's the community.
The CCD slides and that's not, that wasn't separate one?
You know, the CCD and stuff is on its own, so, this, this would be the Community Development Fund that is in the general.
Right, that's.
So, but that is a lot of.
I get confused, cause they got so many, many different accounts.
That's a lot of what the money that we give Mark, you know, to kinda do some stuff with, so I just wanted to let you know.
I don't miss all your money, I don't spend money like everybody else.
No, 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 he doesn't. That's not what I was implying.
I'm sorry, what? I just, I'm.
Kevin's warning, the first thing I.
I think I fell asleep. Is that on Tame today to go?
Okay, I, I, I'm just, you guys said that you wanted to be more aware of where money was coming from, so.
Yes, but that's why I said I, but I.
And the other's coming from utilities, so of course, that's fine, but I just wanted to
Nope.
Say my piece, and that was it.
Wanted to drink.
So then later on, when we need to do an additional appropriation, nobody can say.
Well, no.
I didn't know.
We will, we'll, we'll run that.
Okay, so the claims this time are from January 17? No, they're not.
No, they're not.
No, they're from January the 18th until February the 13th. That's what they are. Because we could not close out claims before the first meeting, so I told you this one was going to be huge. And yes, I will correct it, Ed, sorry. Um, so, um. Yeah, but the checks and stuff on there are correct, because I put those in myself. But the total dollar amount is $635,664.57, but you gotta realize that's a month, a total month.
Yes, that's a total month.
It's not broke up, so.
And it is January 18th to February 13th?
Well, it's January 17th to February 13th, it's corrected on the agenda.
Okay.
It's just not correct on the claim document. For some reason, I didn't change that name when I was changing everything else. But the numbers on there, the check numbers, and the total amount are correct.
Make a motion to approve claims dated January the 17th of 2023 to February 13th of 2023, in the amount of $635,664.57.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to accept the claims from January 18th to February 13th, the amount of $635,664.57. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.